In fact, that'll be easier for me than seeing your light. If your mask comes off, I know you want to say something. And then when we vote, even the voice votes, please just raise your hand when I go. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Raise your hand as well as saying aye. It'll make it very clear to everybody what the actual vote was, that you're physically raising your hand. Same if it's no. If you're voting no in a voice vote, raise your hand at that point. Any questions? Vote what's going on before we begin the meeting? Then I will call them. It is 6:30 PM and I will call the regular Tuesday, July 7th meeting of the Superior Common Council to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag. To the United States, to the Republic of America.
To the Republic for Richard Stans, one nation undergone indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Counselor La Dean.
Here.
Counselor Van Sickle. Counselor Bender.
Here.
Counselor Sweeney.
Here.
Counselor Fennessy.
Here.
Counselor Elm.
Here.
Counselor Ludwig.
Here.
Counselor Sutherland.
Here.
Counselor Kern.
Here.
Counselor Dahlbeck.
Here.
Okay, and a reminder, I see some of the counselors have or are muted. If you are on the video call, please unmute for the length of the meeting. That'll make it, that way we won't miss you if you need to speak. And you're gonna have to catch my attention if you need to speak, counselors, if you're on the video or the call. I'm just gonna note, who else do we? We have several department heads on the line as well, so they should be available for questions.
Here, can I say something? Would it be out of the line?
Counselor Dahlbeck?
I'd like to just say, I'm pleased to see everybody's wearing a mask. It's one way to reduce the spreading of the COVID. Thank you very much.
Thank you, counselor. We will move directly into item 3.1, which is a presentation by Finance Director Putz, the overview of the financial statement audit process. Well, she's preparing, counselors. I asked Director Putz to prepare this. The audit is complete for the City of Superior. We presented to the Finance Committee. This is a very, very important document in the financial life of this city. And all too often, this will be, I think I counted this will be my 10th or 11th public audit that I've participated in as an elected official. They are always very confusing, very complicated documents, so I thought a refresher might be helpful. My challenge to you while you are listening to this presentation is to please come up with questions. This is beneficial not only for you, but for anybody else that might be following along. And there is no such thing as a dumb question in this case. Everybody could stand to learn from this process, I hope. Director Putz.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, counselors. As I'm sure, and as Mayor Payne already alluded to, the 2019 audit report is complete now and was provided to us by our auditors, Whitley. And they will actually be attending this Thursday's Finance Committee meeting. They'll be giving an overview of the report and they'll be available for questions. And so, of course, in advance of the meeting, Mayor Payne has asked me to present a little bit of information, just to let you know what an audit is, how it works, why it's important, and maybe some information you should be looking at when you review the report. And so, this presentation will hopefully provide some background and will make the audit report more meaningful to you as you review it. So first of all, what is an audit? And typically, we're talking about an inspection of the city's financial accounts when we're talking about an audit here. But the word audit can mean a lot of different things as it pertains to the city. For instance, the State of Wisconsin Department of Revenue audits our sales tax filings. The Department of Housing and Urban Development recently audited our CDBG program. Tom Anderson routinely audits accounts and transactions of the city. So there's a lot of different types of audit, but what we're gonna be talking about tonight, I just want to make that distinction, that we're talking about an audit done by independent auditors of a public accounting firm. They're a third party that is independent, independent in fact in presentation. And so essentially, what that means is they wouldn't allowed, they wouldn't be allowed to have, say, a close family member that is, in this case, we're of course, a government, but a close family member that owns stock in the company they're auditing. Or if they had a close family member that was, you know, the mayor here, or a key member of management. So that's just something to know. And largely, if good news coming out of our financial report could in any way benefit the auditor, that would impair their independence. And so that's really what we're getting at. And kind of the last thing to know on this slide anyways, is that if you receive a report that say, says, has Whitley on it, and it says, "Whitley has reviewed this report," that does not mean it's been audited. And that's another, a good distinction to make, that there's compilations, reviews, and audits, they all mean different things. An audit is the highest assurance a public accounting firm will provide on financial statements, and that's what we're talking about in this case. So this is just a quick slide to go over the annual cycle. In January and March, that is the, kind of the busy time in the Finance Department anyways, that's when the finance staff is preparing journal entries for year-end accruals. We're making sure that we have allocated expense and income accurately between the funds, and we're really reviewing all of the prior year activity. Then, at the, sometimes very end of March, but beginning of April, we then provide that information to the auditors. And April and May is when the auditors, that's really when the bulk of their work happens. And my department would still be answering a lot of questions as far as related to the audit, but the auditors are selecting transactions to review and follow through. They are asking, you know, just questions of our financials and pretty much everything related to them. Then in June and July, they're forming our financial statements, and they're beginning to form their opinion of the financial statements. Then come July, is when they actually give us the audit report. They're going to give us all of the journal entries that need to be made, and then they'll also provide guidance on what internal controls they recommend implementing. And then, of course, at that time, we will put those improvements into place, we will record those journal entries, and make any internal control updates that we're able to. And then, we continue to, any changes that they recommended that we put in place, we'll make sure to continue doing those throughout the rest of the year. And really, that we're always preparing for audit, it's kind of a never-ending process. So what are the auditors doing when they're reviewing our financials? And one thing to know is that auditors are really hired to be skeptical. So, for instance, when we provide our financials to them, we tell them what the balance in our bank accounts are. And then, we also provide them a copy of our bank statement. And then, they reach out to the bank directly and ask them what our balance was in our bank account. And so, they're always looking to prove what we said is actually true, or maybe false. They don't like to take our word for it, and they like to independently verify as much information as possible. And another thing to note is that auditors do not look at every single transaction of the company in question. They do a lot of different sampling. Some transactions are pulled randomly. They might be flagged for various reasons, maybe it's an outlier. But through their sampling, they're able to give a good representation of what is in your financial records and if they're correct. And then, the auditors are held to, they have to follow government auditing standards. So when they're auditing our financial records, they don't decide how to do so. There's very strict guidelines on what they need to do and how they need to make sure that our records are correct. And they're always on the lookout for any fraud or material errors. And then, ultimately, they provide an opinion, and there's four different types of opinions, and I'll give a brief description of each one. I think the opinion of the audit is arguably the most important piece of the audit. And so, the first type of opinion is called an unqualified opinion. That's the type of opinion the city has. We've had that type of opinion for as far back as I've gone. It's typically referred to as a clean opinion, and largely, what that means is that the financial statements are fairly presented, fairly presented in all material respects, and that somebody could reasonably rely on them to make decisions. The next type of opinion is a qualified opinion. And this type of opinion means that you weren't following GAAP or GASB standards as you should have been, but your financials are still materially correct. It's certainly not an opinion you would be proud of, but it's not the end of the world. A disclaimer opinion means that the auditors can't give an opinion on your financial records either way. This is certainly a red flag, and if they're not able to provide an opinion, there's definitely something, something going on that needs to be checked out. And then, lastly, there's an adverse opinion. And this means that your financial records are grossly misrepresented, they're materially incorrect, and this is often referred to as the kiss of death. A company that receives an adverse opinion is likely to go out of business in a few years. You would, if your company had an adverse opinion, you'd have a very difficult time getting a bank loan, or finding people who are willing to invest with you. It's, an adverse opinion is truly a terrible thing to happen for you. So we've been using the word materiality a lot, and so, I thought it might be important to describe what materiality is. And if your financial statements are materially correct, it does not mean that they are 100% correct. It means that they're correct enough for users to rely on the information in them. And there's a few factors that the auditors are looking at when they're determining a materiality level. And the most important is that an error is material if it could influence your decision when you're looking at the financial statements. And largely, it has, it's all circumstantial. It's case by case, company by company, and it has a lot to do with the size in terms of dollars. So for instance, if you have a company with $10 in revenue, $5 is hugely material. That is 50% of your revenue. If you have a million dollars in revenue, $5 just isn't material. You could have a $5 mistake, and it's not gonna change people's opinions of where your company stands financially, as far as, you know, the strength and ability to do things. And then, the last thing they're gonna be looking at is what the common users of your financial report, what their needs are. And so, for example, in our case, the banks, bondholders, standards and poorers, they're all looking at our ability to pay back debt. So that would be one specific area for us, that our auditors are definitely gonna be looking at closely, because they know people are relying on that information to make decisions about what our bond rating is, or what percentage we can get in the bond market. So that's a little bit about how that works. So, an audit is important for a number of reasons, and not only the ones on this slide, but certainly, a bad opinion would severely negatively impact our bond rating. We provide our audit report to the State of Wisconsin, to the DNR. We often submit it when we're applying for grants. And most importantly, we owe it to the citizens to provide a true and accurate record of how we, the city, are using taxpayer dollars. So what should you, as counselors, be looking at when you open up the audit report? The first thing I would flip to if I was you would be the opinion. And one thing to note is that if you open up an audit report and it has an adverse opinion, there's really no point in even looking further. Largely, that opinion means that these financials are probably not even correct, and so, you don't have to waste your time any further. And so, I think that's why the opinion is the first place you should go. Next, I like to look at trends. And so, I'm typically looking at fund balances year over year, changes in depreciation, outstanding debt, is it going up or down? I think you can get a lot of insight into the direction of a company when you're looking at those. And of course, I tend to open up a couple of years of audit reports at the same time. So if any of you are looking for prior year audits, I'm happy to provide those to you if that's of any interest. But most of the statements within the audit do even have a last year, and then this year, or a notation of the change in the account. So even just looking at one year's report, you would be able to see some of the trends inside of it. And then, lastly, I would look at the footnotes. Footnotes have a lot of great information in them, and they're worth reading. The GASB standards have a lot of footnotes that are actually required, and I largely take that as their way of saying, "This is important information that needs to be disclosed and described in more detail." And so, that's why footnotes are a great place to really glean some, you know, important information. And I guess I would also note that if an audit report isn't exciting, it's largely a good thing. Stability, it can be kind of a boring thing to look at. And so, this slide is really just to, I just wanted to kind of talk about my goals moving forward with the audit. This is a snip from the current year audit, and I thought it was worth noting, because this is something in our audit that is, it's not a positive thing, but it's certainly not something to lose any sleep over. We've had those two boxes checked yes on the material weakness and significant deficiency. And they've been checked as far back as I looked. And largely, it's because there's a couple of journal entries that the auditors prepare for us. And in speaking with them, they're difficult journal entries, that they have to do with our OPEB liability, and most cities don't prepare them. But when talking to Jeff, who is largely in charge of our audit, he said that over time, he has worked with some finance directors to give a piece of that journal entry every year and kind of train them on it. And I've certainly expressed my interest in doing so. And so, one of my goals is to get those two checkboxes moved into the no section, and hopefully, that's something we can work towards. Do you have any questions?
Counselor Bender.
I'm just gonna leave my mask on. It's easier that way. We came out as unqualified clean, correct?
Correct.
Was there any fraud that was found?
No.
Okay, because I used to chair, a number of years ago, I chaired the Finance Committee, and there was fraud that occurred. So that's two good things.
Good.
Other questions about the process of the audit? Suppose questions about the audit itself, though I would save a number of those for the auditors. Counselor Vence.
Your goal to move the two yeses into nos, can that be done in a single cycle, or do you need several years to accumulate?
I'll likely need several years, and even this year, I had mentioned to our auditor, Jeff, I thought I would try to do that journal entry this year, and he kind of laughed, and he said, "Whoa, whoa, 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 slow down." He said, you know, "It's a great goal, but, you know, it's something to work up to." So I think it'll be a number of years before that's something we can do.
Director Putz, I've asked you a number of times, and some auditors, there are different levels of, for lack of a better term, mistakes or errors that can be found. What are those levels? I think we've talked about two specific levels, like the big errors and the small errors that can be corrected. Like, the big ones, I believe you described were the material errors.
Yep.
Correct? And is there a name for the smaller ones?
Immaterial, I suppose, yeah.
And it's pretty rare to have no errors at all, right?
That's true, and it's certainly possible. I've talked to finance directors who have no journal entries, but it's certainly not uncommon to have. I used to audit myself when I worked in public accounting, and there were very few clients who didn't have journal entries. Often, a goal is even that they'll just hope to only have client entries. And so, removing all entries is, it's a pretty big goal. It's possible, but it is uncommon, probably.
Journal entries is the term. That's a journal entry.
I'm talking about journal entries, yes.
Correction to our finances.
Correct.
And a material journal entry is a bad thing, but even that's not a terribly bad thing, that happens.
It's true, and it doesn't affect our opinion. The opinion is an unqualified opinion, meaning that after, you know, if we were refusing to make the journal entries that the auditors were recommending, then it would affect our opinion. But as long as we're able to be compliant with them, they will, you know, our opinion isn't affected, if that makes sense.
And sure, sure. And while it doesn't affect the opinion, if the council wanted to set a very, very high standard, or to look towards high standards, reducing journal entries is a way to try and set strong financial goals for the city.
Absolutely, and actually, one thing to note, I have the numbers here. Last year, we received 20 audit entries provided by the auditors, and this year, we received 18. So we actually did reduce it by two this year. So a small step, but step in the right direction.
But of course, perfect's the goal.
Perfect is the goal, yeah.
Other questions?
Counselor, I'm here, and what are some of the benefits to be had in promoting or reducing the journal entries? Will our rating go up? What kind of benefits will they have of being proud of not needing to make these journal entries?
That's a great question, and I think that the big thing is being proud. But ultimately, our bond rating likely wouldn't be affected. I don't think our current, and actually, quite frankly, I don't think our journal entries are even sent to the bond rating agency. I don't think they even know what entries we had to make. And so, I guess potentially, if we were able to get those checkboxes into that no column that we talked about on the last slide, maybe that's something that they would take into consideration. But largely, it's just, it helps the auditors. The cleaner your books are when you give them, to them, the easier they are able to sort through your information, the easier they are gonna have a time as far as finding fraud. If they're sorting through a big giant mess, it's gonna just take them that much longer to look through everything. And so, you always want to provide everything as clean and streamlined as possible for them, and then ultimately, when you have less journal entries, that usually can turn into smaller fees as far as the cost of doing your audit. The messier your books, the more work it takes them, and the more they have to charge you.
The point of my questions, Counselor, was the journal entries are not necessarily a strong measure of the quality of your finances. Two may be as good as zero, but they are a pretty good measure of the quality of your finance department. A department that makes no mistakes year over year is better than a department that makes many mistakes year over year. And of course, the audit is not a perfect ranking of our finance departments, but it's a way to just sort of look at ourselves and see how we're doing. Counselor Sweeney.
I don't have a question, I have a comment. And I take it, we've said it before, but I think it's worth commenting on again. Finance Department at the two top positions were 100% turnover. So this was a tumultuous year. That may not be the correct term, but I think everybody understands my term. And so, I applaud the Finance Department, and I applaud you for leading us through this. This was a tough year, the two people left in midterm, so to speak. And that's tough, that's tough coming in, in the bottom of the ninth, or the top of the ninth. So I applaud you, and I think you've done a great job, and I just wanted to say that publicly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further questions?
Mayor?
Counselor Kern.
Yeah, I would like to, or Director Putz, sorry, I would like to also echo what Counselor Sweeney had said. You know, coming in late, this will be my fifth year going through an audit, you had kind of mentioned that they're not always riveting or impressive to look for, but they are interesting, and they do give a lot of information out to our citizens. I know in the past years, that the auditors have came in and picked out certain departments kind of at random, did that happen again this year?
You mean as far as them talking with department heads?
Digging into a certain department a little bit more, I know.
Did we lose yet?
I don't think so.
We just lost the video.
Oh, okay, for a little bit. I'm not aware of them digging into a specific department this year. I do know they had specific conversations with department heads, especially when it related to their, there's a big section of the audit related to our grant reporting. And so, I know they talked to a number of people for that, but I'm not aware of them specifically picking any certain departments to dig into especially.
Thank you.
Further questions? Counselor Sweeney.
Thank you. I do have one more question. Do you know, when they check the fraud, what areas of fraud they looked at this year?
What areas of fraud?
Yeah, they generally pick out some areas that they, at random, but do you know the areas they looked at for the fraud study, so to speak?
I know they're looking for fraud everywhere. If they were looking at it in a specific, special area, I'm not aware of what that was.
Well, generally, they pick, okay.
Sure.
Generally, they pick three or four, and then the next year, they may not pick those three or four again, and so, cash is always an area of interest.
Oh, I'm sure every year, yes.
Right, exactly. Okay.
I think I know why you might be confused, counselors, where they might have, I think they zero in on a specific concept or form of spending, and this year, they really spent a lot of time on grants administration. That's at least what I was asked about. Other questions?
Does this require reaction?
No, this is just presentation, chance to ask questions. Make it easier if you ask questions of the auditors, hopefully. And of course, I'm sure Director Putz will be available. If you come up with more questions, or get a chance to look through the audit in advance, please allow our department to arm you to ask good questions of the auditors as well. Unless there are further questions, thank you, Director Putz.
Thank you.
And I will also echo the congratulations. This would have been a tough audit for you, but I didn't doubt from the beginning, not that they did, but.
Okay, item number four is approval of the minutes of the June 16th regular council meeting.
The motion is by Counsel Bender, and the second by Counsel Dahlbeck, is their discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Item number six is the consent agenda.
Motion approved.
The motion is by Counsel Bender, the second by Counsel Ludwig. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Item 7.1 are the recommendations from the Finance Committee from the June 11th meeting.
Motion to approve.
The motion is by Counsel Elm, the second by Counsel Ludwig, is their discussion. Counselor Sweeney?
No, I'm sorry.
Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. Counselors, for item 7.2, that is still in committee. I'd like to, the ordinance language is still in committee. I'd like to request a motion to refer item 7.2 back to the Finance Committee.
Move.
Correct. I'll second that.
The motion is by Counsel Bender, the second by Counsel Sweeney, to refer to the Finance Committee, is their discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Item 7.3 is the Human Resources Committee recommendation from June 15th.
Motion approved.
Motion is by Counsel Ludwig, the second by Counsel Sweeney, is their discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. Counselor, 7.4, the Business of the Plan Commission, is all covered later in this agenda, so I'm just gonna ask that you take no action. We will vote on all of this, of course, later in the agenda, but if there is no objection, we will move to item 7.5.
7.5 is the Public Works Committee recommendations from June 17th.
Move.
The motion is by Counsel Van Sickle, the second by Counsel Dahlbeck. Is there discussion?
Just one item to note. Item number five, revisions of the ordinances regarding grading and drainage will be taken up under 12.1.
Yep. Is there a motion to table that and consider it concurrently with item 12.1?
Move.
Motion is by Counsel Bender, the second by Counsel Van Sickle, to table that as just item number five. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. The balance of 7.4, is there further discussion? Seeing none?
12.5.
I'm sorry, the balance of 7.5, the Public Works Committee, is there no further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Item 8.1 is, I am recommending approval of the miscellaneous licenses.
Motion to approve.
The motion is by Counsel Sutherland, the second by Counsel Bender, is their discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
8.2, Planning Director Circa is recommending approval of application for small business grant from Kim Moore, Birds Bar, for a total of $7,048.
Motion approved.
Motion is by Counsel La Dean, is there a second?
Right here.
The second is by Counsel Bender, is their discussion?
Yeah, Mayor Payne may ask a question?
Counsel Sutherland.
So if I remember right, does anyone here that applies, applying for this grant, never applied for the relief grant through a code, but correct?
Correct, those are the guidelines. Director Circa, I believe you're on the phone, can you confirm that Birds Bar did not receive a previous grant from the Small Business Relief Program?
Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Item 8.2, Planning Director Cirque is recommending approval of an application for a small business grant from Roger Lundquist, East End Hardware, for a total grant of $4,970.
Motion to approve.
Okay, the motion was by Counselor Sweeney? No, motion was by Counselor Sutherland, the second by Counselor Kern. Close enough.
Close enough.
Although, is there discussion? See none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item 8.4, this item needs to be withdrawn, and we'll bring it back to the next council meeting. This was actually to recommend awarding the property to someone, not putting it out for bid.
And then this requires, this requires no action. We'll just bring it back.
Okay.
This requires no action. Thank you, counselors.
Item 8.5, Police Chief Alexander is recommending approval to forego seeking bids and purchase portable radios from Duluth Superior Communications for an amount not to exceed $300,000.
Motion to approve.
The motion is by Counselor Sutherland, the second by Counselor Bender. Is there discussion? Counselor Sweeney? Just a moment, Counselor. Counselor Sweeney.
My first question, is the chief here or in the audience?
Chief Alexander, are you on the phone?
I am.
Would you tell me what the last paragraph provides the GSA pricing? What does GSA stand for?
Government Services Agreement. It's basically, you know, at the state, local, and federal levels, the government, companies that do business with the government send out pricing plans that are supposed to be the best price as possible for government entities. So stating that the likelihood that you'd be able to find a bid other than GSA for police portable radios is pretty unlikely. They're all going to be at that GSA amount.
So you're saying that GSA is equivalent to or the same as the state pricing?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct, yes.
I was going to refer this back to get quotes. I don't like going without quotes, just in general, but if it's statewide pricing, then we're fine, but it's always a good idea to put it out for bids with the local. If we followed this system, no one would ever be able to bid on something. And so I realize they're a local company, that's fine. I'm sure they're a great company, that's fine. I'm sure the product is a great company, a great product, but we have to give the opportunity for other local vendors to bid on this stuff, and just to eliminate them. I won't refer it back this time, but I just think that we have to stick to those and give everybody an opportunity to bid on these things. That's the fair way to do it. I have no problems with the company, I have no problems with the product, but sometimes, to put it out for bids, we learn a lot, okay? So I will not, after that editorial, I will not refer it back, but next time, I think I will, because we've got to put this stuff out for bids. That's all. Thank you.
Further discussion?
Mayor Fairbairn.
Counselor Sutherland.
This is kind of directed towards Chief Alexander. So let's say this passes tonight, we vote on it, how soon will our men and women in the police department be having some new radios?
Chief Alexander, did you hear that question?
You hear me?
Yes.
Yes. I'm sorry, first off, I did get booted off of the call, so I missed part of Counselor Sweeney's statement, so somebody wanted to catch me up on that. But to answer Counselor Sutherland, we would have those in the hands of the officers before the end of the month.
Counselors.
Thank you very much.
Chief Counselor Sweeney made a statement relating to his preference for bids in most things, a conversation that I think can take place more in the future.
Sounds good, I appreciate it. Thanks.
Further discussion? See none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
9.1, the mayor is recommending approval to reappoint Katie Perkaro to the Mayor's Commission on Disabilities.
The motion is by Counselor Bender, the second by Counselor Ludwig. Is there discussion? See none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Thank you, counselors.
Item 11.1 is.
No, business by Counselor. I have business.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Counselor Bender.
Okay, and I got a call yesterday, I got a call today about this. The first call yesterday was, where can people get masks? And I can answer that. You can go to Menards and buy them. And I think you can get, I think you can get 10 for $6.90 or something like that. But this person, in all seriousness, wanted to know where people in the public would be able to get masks. Then the second thing, the same person called me today about this and said that she had been in the complex here, and both on this side and on the other side, and saw very few people that were wearing masks. And I said, when I was at the city complex last week, I wore a mask to come in and get something notarized. So that's all I have, but those were valid concerns.
Thank you, Counselor. Was there other business by counselors?
Item 11.1 is a resolution designating certain banks and investment firms as depositories for the city of Superior.
Motion to approve.
Motion is by Counselor Bender, the second by Counselor Ludwig. Is there discussion? See none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item 11.2 is a resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the Wisconsin Department of Transportation for a grant under the Harbor Assistance Program. You have tonight in front of you just a corrected page of the actual agreement from Planning Director Cirque. There was a typo on one of the numbers.
Is there a motion to approve as corrected?
Motion to approve as corrected.
Counselor Van Sickle, so the motion then was by Counselor Van Sickle, the second by Counselor Elm. Is there discussion? See none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
11.3 is a resolution setting a public hearing on August 18th to vacate a portion of 23rd Avenue East and East 9th Street.
The motion was made by Counselor Dahlbeck. Is there a second? Second is by Counselor Bender. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
11.4 is a resolution setting a public hearing on August 18th to vacate a portion of East 16th Street and area alleys at Stinson Avenue.
Motion to approve.
Second.
The motion is by Counselor Dahlbeck, the second by Counselor Sweeney. Is there discussion? See none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
11.5 is a resolution setting a public hearing August 4th to rezone property located on East 8th Street and 21st Avenue East from M1 Light Manufacturing to our 1B, 1-family residential.
Motion to approve.
The motion is by Counselor Dahlbeck, the second by Counselor Sweeney.